Let's begin with a minute of, or a few seconds of silence and reflection, please. All right, thank you very much. We'll officially call this meeting into order, call everyone's attention to the agenda. Welcome everyone here, our staff and elected officials. I stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. To my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I believe in your packet before we consider the approval of the agenda, I believe. Mr. Clemmons, you had a...
Yeah, I've got an item related to add to the agenda, so amendments for the debris removal contract.
We request that to be added as item seven A.
Seven A. Okay, any other?
Um, yes, I, I propose that we add to the agenda a discussion on moving the starting time of the board of commissioner meetings to earlier in the evening for the duration of this emergency situation when the public can't come anyway. Apparently several of us have had this idea independently in the past few days.
Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion that we approve the agenda? Or let's put a number on that proposal.
Why don't we, why don't we do it at the end, after storm debris pickup? Just make it fourteen A since I'm in charge of fourteen anyway?
Okay, we have two proposed additions to the agenda. And who made a motion to approve with the amendments? Ms. Pat, did you do that?
Yes, um, I propose we approve the agenda with the two amendments that were discussed.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made second to amend the agenda by adding these two items as proposed is, are anyone object to that? If not, by acclamation, we'll amend the agenda and move to number five. On our agenda, considering minutes of the regular meeting of July twenty-one, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Pat seconded. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It's unanimously approved. We are now on number six of the agenda. Public comments on agenda. Do you have anything, Ms. Madam clerk?
No, sir, no comments today.
Anyone else in the room? Okay. We'll go to number seven on the agenda, engineers' report about paving streets. Mr. Hewitt, you want to speak first before the engineer speaks?
No, sir. By way of introduction, Shane Lippert from Right Angle Engineering, who has done civil works, work for the town previously, has got a professional engineer's report that he'll present for y'all tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Thank you, commissioners. I believe in your packet you had the Clementon Engineering report for Seagull Drive, Deal Drive, Canal Drive. It's good to be out in public. Thanks for having me down tonight. It's good to get out and see, you know, some folks again. We were all kind of being restricted on movement, so it's good to be out. The summary and conclusions and recommendations in section A is the highlight of the, the report. The, um, the main takeaways from, from this is that, you know, you have existing roads that were out there. Two, being Seagull and Canal Street have been there for ages, subdivisions dating back, you know, into the fifties. Deal Street was subdivided a little, I think, early, but then it wasn't really developed until into the nineties, which makes that one a little bit different in that they had acquired a stormwater permit to do that development at that time. So, the way that the state looks at, um, the building of roads is it's built upon area and the subject to the rules that became enacted in nineteen eighty-eight. So, the short story is Seagull and Canal were really built before eighteen, nineteen eighty-eight, so they're going to be exempt from the stormwater rules, but Deal had a stormwater permit a little later. So, um, these streets are going to fall under some amount of permitting, um, because you are more or less disturbing, although, you know, we don't expect a whole lot of grading, you're not pushing over trees and doing a lot, but you're going to do some amount of grading, you're going to go over the one acre threshold for a sediment erosion control permit, which then triggers a stormwater permit. So, the short story is, you got stormwater permitting to do, but Deal Street was already done, so that's a little easier, but we still need to address the other two. And then the full cost estimates are in the appendix of the report, but the, um, the estimates are there in the summary and conclusions of the total. Seagull, Seagull Drive is estimated to be, estimated to be approximately hundred forty-five thousand. Deal is sixty-five thousand two hundred and Canal at eighty thousand nine sixty-two. And that includes asphalt, that includes base course, that does include some amount of, um, adjustments to utilities and a little bit of stormwater work and those kind of things. And some contingency engineering and surveying is all rolled into those final numbers. And I'm here to answer any other questions if you want to dig in a little deeper or want to know anything else, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I've got a couple, if I may, commissioners. Let me go ahead. On page four, I know you have a reason where we have on Deal Street six inches of, of base and on four, for Canal Drive. I know Canal Drive has had a lot of traffic for a long, long time. That was the first subdivision on this island. And, um, but the difference in two inches of rock, I guess, is because of the established base already on Canal Drive is...
That's, that's correct, yes.
And the second comment about Canal Drive, uh, it says eight hundred feet. Uh, I know you, the engineer, are far better with math than me, but I think it's more of seven hundred feet than it is eight hundred.
Okay.
So, it might be a little less than what we're talking about.
Yes, and, you know, this is, uh, uh, you know, measuring, um, off of GIS and, you know, those kind of approaches that, and I may, it may have been eight hundred right away to right away, you know, so I, I think, you know, that's probably a safe number and then when we get...
Eight hundred's definitely a safe number.
Yeah, when we get into surveying a little bit, you know, I think that comes down. And the, and I'll also, you know, point out, you know, you did catch the base course differences. And, and some of those might be a little different when we actually do some, uh, some compaction testing, because, you know, the roads are pretty solid. You know, I know there's not a whole lot of base course in Seagull and Deal, Moore and Canal, and, you know, when we really get into looking at, at that, you know, you may not need six, you know, but I know that it's not full depth base course out there on those two, so that's why I think, you know, safely six, you know, maybe four, but we'll just have to address it when, when we get there.
Any comments, commissioners, any questions?
They're, they're basically, the roadway is built to state spec. They're pretty close?
Today, no, no.
No, but what's your proposal?
Would be stated, yeah.
Yeah. And like, once it's paved, will the state take it over then and maintain it or still stays private?
Our town.
Town, okay.
Other than, I think Ocean Boulevard, I think everything else in town.
Any more comments, questions?
I, I have a couple of questions. So, how, how do we finance this? Do the people who live on these streets have to contribute to the financing of, of this project?
That's where the staff will request guidance on how to proceed. Uh, past precedent is by petition, where the property owners petition the town to pay for half of the road, and it's, then it's done through a special assessment.
And I guess there was some discussion last meeting about the time and expense that we spend tending to deal and, do we have an estimate of what it costs the town currently each year to maintain those streets, the three streets we're talking about?
Well, we're operating on pretty much a shooting, shooting range of roses, M and R, and we got like ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year. Just those two streets alone, we get a pretty good portion of that, and that's not probably keeping it to standards that people would like to see. It kept up to the past two years, there'd been a real big move in increasing buildings. Uh, I remember five, six years ago, there were only like maybe three to four houses on that home street, and now it's just about completely built out. It's going to become harder and harder in the future.
So roughly ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year to maintain those streets plus...
Yeah, and that'd be, that'd be something every corner you could, you know.
Any more questions, comments? Something just dawned on me, and that is Canal. Only the south side of Canal is developable, has been developed, is usable. The north side, the waterway side, is environmental.
It still has property owners, and the way that the, the law reads is that they are, they have road frontage to it, and, and they would have to go along with that being paved. It's my understanding of the way it reads.
But if, if the state of North Carolina claims to own the marsh coming into that, that right of way, is the state of North Carolina going to pay their share if they own it?
I, I don't know.
Well, now you got my point, because that's...
There was intentionally an old bulkhead left where the, I guess it was, uh, maces was at.
Yeah.
They, they intentionally left that bulkhead there on the recommendations of Kama, so that bulkhead could be put back and that property could be used. That bulkhead was intentionally, even though it fell down, Kama recommended that it be left there when they demolished it, so that the bulkhead could be replaced in the future and that property be, have some use.
Yeah, the east end of Canal Drive though is my point.
Yeah, it's too close. Our watermark comes up too far and it's been in there seventy-five.
And that's a seventy foot wide right of way, if I remember correctly, not a fifty foot wide.
But right at the end there, there's that bulkhead right there.
Yeah, on the west end.
On, on the tax scroll, as far as the petition goes, we would go by the active tax, tax parcels as far as, uh, who the owners are.
So the owners will pay...
First of all, they have to petition, and that road frontage has to meet the criteria of fifty-one fifty.
But owners of property that cannot be developed or used would still have to pay.
They, they would have to agree, and those ratios would have to be met. Given that they did and those ratios met, then they would have to pay.
And, David, you said that, that town pays half and that property owners pay half?
There, there's actually, uh, uh, an accommodation for less than fifty percent for the town to pay more. And I'm, I may have that backwards, but past precedent, it's been fifty-fifty.
I think for purposes of discussion, and someone in the room can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we did our water and our sewer, I think that undevelopable, unusable properties, didn't they see, didn't they receive treatment, whereas they didn't have to pay?
That was before my time.
I remember that to be correct.
I think that now, now that you're getting into is that you're going to have to get the attorney to give you an opinion on whether or not that those properties can be assessed. Um, but as far as a petition goes, the property owners of note would still, as my understanding, my read on the law, would still have to be part of the petition process.
And I agree with, that's the same understanding I have.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Yes?
I got one for Shane. Um, did you look at doing these streets, not using asphalt and just using some kind of, um, gravel, uh, more stable gravel base like Canal Drive is, you know, it's obviously a better...
Well, if you were to go into the, um, cost estimate, I think you could extract, but I think the only thing you could really extract is just the cost of the asphalt, because you're still going to have to tie in driveways and, you know, do other kind of site improvements, and then you could not pave it with the asphalt and then come back and do that at a later date, you know, if that's, you know, so desired. So, you know, if you wanted to, if you want a number, I could, you know, extract that out of it.
I'm, I'm just asking.
I got, I, I, I got an opinion on that. I do not think that it should be the town's policy to do anything but pave the streets because of a number of, of reasons why. The, just, just cutting the road in and hard panning it is, to me, is like the equivalent of building a house and just putting tar paper on the roof without shingles. You're going to have to come back in there in six weeks and put more tar paper just time and time again.
That's also going to impact Mr. Clemmons' comment about the ten thousand dollars a year saved.
Other question, if you were to do that, would that, would that, uh, keep you from being able to do an assessment on it, though?
You can, no, the, the, the streets, the, uh, rules are for improvements to a street.
Yeah, so, I, I would keep doing things that's mine, I would like, just with, uh, things that are on the asphalt, that you can still, you know, make this nightmare.
That's my opinion too, but I was asked the question.
Yeah.
But Seagull Street's just dirt. It's, it's not, it's nothing.
It's mud.
It's just mud.
I wish you could, I wish I could...
And I don't think you're doing it for, if you really weighed it out, I don't think, I don't see how you're keeping it up for ten or fifteen thousand dollars. I think the town, if you added all those streets together, it's gotta be more than that.
For years, for years, unless there were no traffic, very little traffic there, because that's, that's increased. I wish you, I wish I could see how that, one pile, one of them all, that road passed like twenty years. It would probably be amazing.
Any more questions or comments?
Um, I have, in, in closing, well, I, I have a comment. I think that from the staff's perspective, we're looking for guidance as to how the board wishes us to proceed in terms of process. Previously, it's been my experience, these things kind of come about as far as a grassroots movement. Um, I think that it would have, uh, more value if the town initiated and prepared an actual petition for the property owners on those streets and laid out, you know, portions of this cost and what the process is and that kind of thing, and invited the petition to be returned. And that way, it's basically like they would be voting on whether or not that they wanted to pursue that. So that, that is the, the, um, I, I need y'all to tell me that that's what you wish me to do in order to move forward with this type of petition process.
I agree. I would move that the town take the lead in, in, um, advocating for the petitions to be returned and to prepare the document that gets sent to our property owners to take the steps that need to be taken so that it, it is a timely send out and return.
Is that a motion?
Uh, yes, that's a motion for the town to take the lead on, um, putting out the, putting out the documentation to encourage the response to the petition.
Second. Uh, any further discussion?
One more, uh, one thing to add, one question. You had said in, before talking to you, that, that the portion that the homeowners on those streets had to pay could be, um, split for several years. I think you said maybe even up to ten years. Is that, if you would include that in a letter so they would know exactly how that, you know, how they would have to come up with the money and pay it back, I think that would help the cause.
Yeah, that was, that was my, my question. How many years you're allowed to pay it?
The, the, that particular question needs to be answered later in the, in, in the process, when y'all decide how it could be financed. Um, first you need to, you, you need to see if there's interest in doing it for folks to be assessed, and then, um, figure out the terms later on.
I just think the normal response that they're going to is how much?
Yeah.
And how, I mean, I think that's going to be an initial reaction for everybody that gets it.
And, and there will be, there will be follow-on, because if the town is, let's hypothetically, you say you're going to pay half of three hundred thousand dollars, let's just say everybody goes along with it, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Well, if you're going to finance the other half for folks, then you're fronting another hundred and fifty thousand dollars over time. So the board's going to have to, we've got some, some more ratcheting down on the specifics of this thing first before it goes to... There's about three more decision points in this process.
I, I, I kind of, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. I don't, I don't argue with you, I, but I do agree with Brian. I think the natural question people are going to ask is, if, if twenty of us have to come up with a hundred fifty thousand dollars, is that all this year or is it spread over three or four years? If, if we don't tell them that upfront, then you just kind of go in circles for a while.
In the past, it was not financed. In the past, it was a lump sum payment. Yeah, and what we're talking about here is a thousand, twelve, fourteen hundred dollars. Uh, I forget what the, what the split was on, for about a fifty foot lot.
Don't we have a motion and sec on the floor?
Yep. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Engineer, man. Seven A. Mr. Clemmons? Thank you again for you and your crew, all that you do.
Well, yes, sir. Um, speaking in reference to amendments, are you pre-contracting the town previously entered into the monkey jurisdiction was after pre-managing the contract to southern disaster recovery in twenty nineteen? It now appears that local landfills in their capacity show the Rosalina landfill disposals with efficiency reports attached. The contractor may be required to hold the debris for longer distances than covered by the terms of the regional contract. The town will need to amend the regional contract to accommodate the longer haul business, opposed, opposed amendments attached. And it's spoken for discussion. Personally speaking, I don't see where we have any choice. At the time this contract was awarded, the prices were, were calculated off the haul of the debris to the landfill. There's no other options and nowhere else to go with it, so therefore I see where we're going to have no choice but to add this amendment.
Well, I, I guess my question is, in the original contract, is there a provision that if the landfills close or if there are circumstances beyond the control of the vendor, that we would have to pay more money? I mean, usually you went through a contract because you're going, you have a fixed price and that's what you're going to pay.
Not, not that I'm aware of, but actually Rosalina County is one that solicited for the bids of the contract, and it actually didn't have any mileage or have anything covered, you know, doing any other location, and that's the reason amendment necessary. I mean, you're talking, I'll say from right here and I clobbered out to the landfill, you're talking probably, well, maybe ten miles. Sandson County's right at a hundred miles, that's enough.
No, I, I, I got you, but we have people on the board here who enter into contracts and just, if you enter into contract and the price of building materials goes up astronomically, you can't raise the price of the contract because things happened you didn't prepare for. And I'm just wondering, I mean, if we have to, I get it, but I don't know if what we're doing here is voluntary because the vendor didn't draw the contract the way they should have drawn the contract.
Well, I will say this, lean in the boat by our seat, Ocean Isle Beach, uh, boat dock, and everybody on their contract in there, I, you know.
I, I got you.
I don't see it to be, you know, any way added, but, uh...
Do we know what that is to call?
The, the good, the good thing about it is, is we don't have that much to haul.
Yeah.
I mean, we, um, you know...
On this storm.
On this storm.
I had, I had actually thought about after we get everything at the turkey trap site where it can see the volume, maybe reach out to them again and ask if it is a possibility. If it is, that'd be well, well, good. But, you know, I would love to see it straightened for the future, most of this provision's in here, we should be covering for a long time.
Just out of interest, what's the rough percent increase that, that they're charging compared to what we signed last year?
I don't have that with me right now, I haven't. So, all gravity, one way or the other, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do with it. We've got sixteen hundred yards on the ground, but we're going to start another.
How much?
Sixteen and seven, I think it is, is a...
Pretty good pile.
Pretty good sized pile, it's kind of about twenty feet tall and probably about seventy-five feet long and maybe fifty feet, fifty feet wide.
And it's a turkey trap now?
Yes, sir, it's a way, it's a, so I worked out, and that's, that's one good thing that worked out good for us this time, it was a good, close location. Quicker we get, don't desire, you know, the better it, uh, actually when I come back, uh, Monday morning, it'll start to look closer to normal again.
So Chris, I mean, you got any idea how much more money we're talking about? I mean, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, ten thousand?
No, but I can say this, if we make the amendment and we're getting on the ground there, you know, we can do some kind of estimate and see how much it is, and we can come up with, you know, fair demand, but, you know, I really don't know what that'd be this time. I don't really, you know, not trying to be smart, but we still got another week to go, and I don't have any people that's not good to bring out or, or anything like that. I'm hoping not much more.
Yeah. But, but as the mayor points out, if we agree to this amendment to the contract, we replace the earlier contract, and there's no telling how much or how many times we're going to have to use this proposal again. I think the way, the way I look at it is, we do have a choice. Either the contract calls for them to be able to change the price based on circumstances that were unanticipated, or it doesn't. And if it doesn't, they have to haul it and we don't have to pay any more money. So what I would suggest is that we have our town attorney look at the current contract to see if there is, uh, an avenue for them to change the price and tell us whether we should or whether we have to or we don't have to pay, pay a change in the fees, because this could be a large amount of money down the road.
One interesting question would be, are there any other terms in the contract that would offer a necessity of changing the contract price, such as fuel costs and that kind of thing? Which, which, uh, would give us some insight into whoever wrote this. Uh, maybe their thinking or their lack of thinking.
I agree. If we have to do it, then we do it, but if we don't have to do it, then why, why should we pay more money than we have to in the future?
I would love to, I have to, even if you were me in this right now, and it's got the mileage rates right here. Until that, we use that site, we still don't, I still don't think we'd be obligated to anything, we go ahead and put this in there, but that's just my opinion. Because it actually, if you look down the list, I wish I had the contract with me, with me, because, you know, it's got like forty to sixty miles, it's got a price. Sixty, sixty to eighty miles, it's got a price. Eighty to a hundred, it's got a price. You know, if you find another location closer than that... You know, if you find another location closer than that, you still have your bases covered, but I don't know what that location's gonna be at the time. I'll do some research and see. I really feel like it's pretty limited because, uh, what I gather, everything Brunson County landfill hauls in there, he goes on the truck, goes to Sampson County, you know, so. I've heard that for years.
There, there's no capacity left at, at that landfill anymore. They were talking about increasing the size of the, the, the place there where you dumping everything, so you get more trucks in there and everything.
I think about, looking back probably ten years ago, we were talking about expanding and had a lot of, called a lot of convo.
Yeah, the neighbors.
Certain trary communities, people didn't want it.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement with Mike that the best thing to do is to have our lawyer look at the original contract and see what our obligations are or aren't.
Is there, Mr. Hewitt, is there a, um, timeframe for a response required either technically or morally or any other reason? In other words, would we need to consider, um, maybe not adjourning this meeting, but recessing the meeting to come back after an attorney? Gives us an indication of research results or something. We don't wanna get caught.
Uh, and probably just as important is we don't need to leave that stuff up at the Turkey Trap site.
We have neighbors out there too.
I know.
We'll do a phone call.
Anyway, um, we've, what's the pleasure of the board? We've got an issue here and need to have some direction. What, what's your pleasure?
Why don't we just let David call, call the county and find out? I mean, if we got to pay the increase, then that's the way it's gonna be. Let, let him call the attorney first and let's get a read on that and go, and, and take it from there. I mean, that would seem the logical thing. I mean, the contract's already grown up and this isn't putting nobody in the spot. You know, they told us, well, we'll take it for X amount of dollars, okay? But now we're in the middle of it and we got to table it. I mean, if that's what we have to do, it's what we have to do. But let's check the legalities of it and see, you know, get that force us. And if they do fine, I mean, we pay, we're not trying to be bunch of chinchies here, but we want to just check. But, and I hear the other side, what David said, we can't allow that stuff to set up very, very long. To get our best, get in the landfill.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other special meetings or anything scheduled this month before the next regular meeting?
No, sir.
The, um, what we're thinking is that the debris pickup will continue for another week through Tuesday of next, next week.
Coming Tuesday.
So, I don't, I don't know what everybody's calendar is. Perhaps you could, could look at perhaps maybe a week from now, not knowing what the attorney's ability to review it is. But that might be a, a snapshot on when to try to, try to, uh, get back together.
You're saying we can call a meeting? We got plenty of time to advertise and.
We have to call a meeting to vote on the ordinance, right?
Yep.
And so it has to be at least twenty-four hours, but we can do it next week, right?
Now, now you're getting into, I think there's some.
That, that ordinance that's gonna be discussed could be anytime after twenty-four hours, so anytime after tonight at seven.
So, so we could combine that with this and hold one meeting, which we were gonna have to hold one meeting anyway. So really wouldn't be an extra inconvenience.
We don't need to do anything right this minute, man.
Technically, you could recess and reconvene at daytime, certain to address those two matters.
We, we do have a copy of the original contract that we can send to the attorney to take a look at.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clemmons.
Thank you. Just, just so I'm clear on what we're supposed to do, we're gonna have the attorney to look at it because I think that.
We, we were to have the, what Mike proposed, which was have the attorney look at the original agreement and see whether or not, um, there is.
There are any provisions that would allow for amendment based on, on anticipated occurrences? Actually, revision of the contract.
Okay, we're ready to go to the next item, number eight.
One thing, do, do you want me to, uh, do one of those tasks for the attorney and send it to you?
I was gonna get on the first thing in the morning, if you, if you help me along by prompting me that way, that'd be fine.
I'll do it. I'll get it to you in a moment.
All right, number eight, update on current recovery operations. And Mr. Clemmons, you can help me as I go through this. Correct me if I make a mistake. And just jotting down some points of conversation. Uh, my understanding is that all of our streets are cleared. Uh, all the streets are open, uh, as normal. Uh, we do not have any pounding on any of our streets at the current time. And, uh, we have, um, our debris contract operations are ongoing and I noticed that they're using my property over here next to the water tank. Long as, long as if they tear my parking lot up, but there's big trucks, I'll hope that they will haul some stuff back in there, but.
You can keep me as butter for you.
Okay, all right. We're, we're all good neighbors here. There, okay.
They got a bunch of stuff that they can dump on there to level it out.
There you go. Uh, I would also like to compliment our owners on Holden Beach, um, for their quick reaction and their own cleanup. We've had a lot of people that came in from out of state and out of town bringing their trucks and equipment to clean up debris of, of their own and help their neighbors. It was great to see the, uh, community effort and clean this island up. I had reported to some of you and especially Mr. Hewitt, town manager, the rental units that my company managed, we thought we had approximately forty trash cans that were missing. Uh, my owners are saying that some of them have been found in the canals and the marshes and so forth. I don't have a up-to-date count, uh, on what's going on. I did communicate to, uh, individual owners that had trash cans missing that they need to call Waste Industries Direct. And I hope that those that are in attendance tonight by way of electronic methods hear what I'm saying. If you have missing trash cans, to please call Waste Industries Direct and request replacements. Um, we have had numerous docks and seawalls being repaired and replaced. My understanding of the dock contractors that I've talked to, most all of them are four weeks or more out now on their work schedule. So if you have not communicated to a dock contractor to rebuild or replace, please do it as soon as possible and get your name on the list. Uh, rentals for the current times and the future, uh, days, late summer and fall are looking extremely strong. And my thinking is that the hurricanes, um, along with the virus issues and all, I think we're gonna see more and more people renting this fall, working from home at the beach rather than working from home at home. So, uh, I think we'll see an extension of our rental season to offset our slow start in the spring. We have a lot of upset people, uh, rental-wise, that, uh, are still unhappy with, uh, thinking that we had evacuated the island, uh, too quickly. Uh, we also have a lot of people that are calling and thanking us for doing that. So there's a mixed, mixed bag out there and, um, as always, with the help of our town staff and elected officials, we're just all collectively do the best we can working together. I would also like to report that as mayor, I'm still receiving a lot of phone calls in regards to the desire to get more of, uh, stickers. Those people that failed to get stickers earlier, this is just a reminder to, uh, communicate, uh, with the town. And Mr. Hewitt, do, these people that are inquiring about stickers now, what, what directive do I need to give them? Are they available? Are they coming? Or what, what are we doing on stickers?
Now that the state of emergency has ended, they can, uh, they can get them from town hall.
Just call town hall and follow directions from staff. So anybody that needs stickers can call town hall, talk with the staff person that answers the phone and follow their directions. We'll try to get the appropriate stickers available to you. I guess the big thing now is preparing for the next storm. I hope we all have received a message that how fortunate we were compared to our neighbors of Ocean Isle and Oak Island. And, uh, again, for everyone to have their storm plan and, and work their plan and make preparations for the next. And lastly, I need your help here, Mr. Clemmons. Um, my understanding is that Brunson County has and continues to allow free trash dump at the, at the landfill. Uh, do you know what the deadline is on that?
I think from the information I got, I think this week is in, and I think it ends Saturday.
That's my understanding, so, uh, hoping that we are correct, Saturday would be the last day of the free storm debris, uh, acceptance at the Brunson County landfill up at Bolivia. So I think that concludes my simple overview of the hurricane that we just had. Anybody got any questions? Mr. Hewitt, you got anything you wanna add? Any staff members, cards to that? Okay, let's go to number nine. Um, Mr. Evans? I wanna add something while Mr. Evans is coming to the podium. Uh, again, on behalf of the town and property owners and, and all of us involved here, special thanks to the fire department, the rescue squad, and all, all of the people that were involved in our community in trying to get through that storm and all the ramifications involved. Thanks, uh, everybody. Mr. Evans?
Okay, this is, um, I guess this is in reference, I, they're flipped in here compared to, to the public thing, so I hope I'm on the right one here. This is in reference to the maximum home size. I think that the board was asking for clarification.
Yeah.
Before they went forward. Uh, the clarification, uh, was needed. Um, there is no square, heated square footage that I could find that would be applicable anywhere in our ordinances as it applied to the zoning code. But, um, thinking what's going to be happening in the future and what's actually in the ordinance book now, everywhere we have that square foot mark, it needs to be preceded with a gross floor area. We have a definition in our ordinance book under, under our land use section that talks about gross floor area, which is the equivalent of outside wall to outside wall as far as there. So it should be everywhere it says square foot, as in say line one on that page where it says five thousand square feet, it should be preceded with five thousand square feet of gross floor area. And then what that, 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 that definition also encompasses the E's. So that would then not mislead anyone that's using our ordinance book about what their stormwater requirements are and what those maximum requirements are. That's the, that's the way it needs to sound.
Excellent.
Definition's already there. We just need to add the word.
You said it was inclusive of E's.
Yeah, the, the gross floor area actually, and, and what it is, is that that was done so that way back when, that if the E's exceeded a certain size and it's in that definition, then it would also be included in that square footage so that you wouldn't exceed your stormwater for imperviousity.
It's in there now. I think twelve inches or less is not.
And that's actually in the gross floor area section of that definition.
So that's gonna stand, please.
Right, yeah. So what this does is, it literally makes it match what that, what the actual definition is and what the rule is. Good call.
Well, thank you, Brian, because he was the one who asked me first. Um, could we then have the ordinance written with that included? And then we can, at the next meeting, have a public hearing so that we can move to adopt the ordinance? Because we've been discussing this. It's been in the public eye for many months now.
Before you go any further.
Sure.
I think the board needs to be reminded that if we get lost and we wrap up with some of this stuff, I think I, I need to say this, so that if you're not asking me a question later, when KAMA approves the inlet hazard area, regardless of whether they extend it to where they are or not, they are also in the process of clarifying the inlet hazard rules. The inlet hazard rules used to be, or was interpreted as, if you were outside of those setback requirements, then you didn't have to meet the five thousand square foot threshold. They are clarifying it now to say that if you're in the inlet hazard area, then you're gonna be limited to five thousand square feet. My understanding of it, that's what clarification was required. So we, I, I hope we have a goodness lens. So regardless of whether they extend that inlet hazard area, they are already, they are bound and determined that they're going to clarify that rule. Because the whole intent was always to minimize that to five thousand square foot. Now, if you look to where these ordinance that we have will apply outside of combining lots, then really the only loss that we have where you can have something this large is most likely gonna be somewhere between the latter part of nine hundred block up through the, the end of the, of, of our west end, up through the, the subdivision out there. So with that said, if it doesn't extend and it stays at the gate, you know what I mean? Then everything from there on was gonna be limited to five thousand square feet anyway, this is gonna be in that inlet hazard area. With that new clarification, if it extends down, then it's gonna extend down way farther than where you could ever had a five thousand square foot house. Anywhere. So, I don't know if we wanna go ahead and do this just in case, or if you wanna wait and see if they're gonna be limited anyway. I'm just putting it out there so the question doesn't get asked later. Why would we pass an ordinance with.
I, I, I understand that. I also know that we and other islands are arguing on these changes, including the one you're discussing. And I would propose that we go ahead with our ordinance and if something happens that we have to change it, we have to change it. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna hold up on the assumption that they're gonna force this change on the various islands.
Couldn't we?
Well, I, I, I guess maybe I should clarify, but even if you pass it, it won't make a difference. You'll just have an ordinance that's going to be larger than what they could build anywhere. And it would cover you if somebody started buying all those lots and started combining them at the east end. So, I, I, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you upfront that you need to, we've had this discussion. We decided that then we could say we've had the discussion and cut it all away. But as far as that ordinance for the five thousand square foot, I mean, their rule, they, they were only, they only clarified that rule. That rule was being misinterpreted. It was supposed to always be five thousand square feet no matter where you were at.
In, in order to avoid confusion, couldn't we put some limited language in there that says that these are the zoning rules as long as they comply with the KAMA regulations?
Well, I, I don't think you need to do that because under law, the tougher of those two regulations is gonna take precedent. Which means theirs is gonna just override ours. But ours would still be in place.
Yes, yes.
What would still be in place is your setback requirements for those larger houses. The five thousand square foot house would have to meet those greater setbacks, which would then give people more privacy and less opportunity to be intrusive to their neighbors if they're trying to build those bigger houses. So there's a consideration, a much more of a consideration for passing the ordinance other than thinking that it's gonna get overridden with a smaller size, a more max, a less maximum size. I'm just saying that we need to discuss it until somebody can ask that question. I live in a world where I have to pretty much cover all my bases, some of the questions get asked, I can say we consider.
And I guess that was why I was talking about the limiting language. We understand, but then it's in black and white on a page and anybody can read it and should understand it before they start their project.
Yeah, we could put that, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how we would write that language, but it could be added, sure and certainly. If it wants, you know, it'll only be for clarification.
Then I go back, can we request then that you bring a final version with the clarifications to the next meeting? And that we schedule a public, a public hearing as we did this month at the beginning of the next B O C M? So that we can move forward to get this ordinance finalized? Thank you for that clarification, Tim, that helped a lot.
My pleasure, the board.
Did you make a motion?
Was that a motion?
I, I move that Inspector Evans brings a final version with the changes that were discussed to the September meeting. And that we schedule a public hearing before the September B O C M so that we can move forward on adopting this ordinance.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Evans. I believe you're up, number ten.
Number ten was the housekeeping. Number ten was where we had those text amendments for the housekeeping. It could bring us more in line with some better construction practices than what we were exercising out there before. We just had a public hearing on this one. And basically, everyone should be aware of it. We made some changes to one fifty-four twenty-one. We added an exception to one fifty-four point twenty-one, that was the standard language. The language did have exceptions for elevators and stairs, but it wasn't clear. So we wrote an exception that does make it clear. It allows for elevators and interior stairs, that one set of interior stairs that you can have to be finished with floodproof materials. That way, it was, there's no, I don't have to do an interpretation of that ordinance every time it gets to my desk. We did, we had a, we took out some language. And everyone agreed that hardened structures are not the right decision for us on our ocean front, or in our D zones, or in our A zones. And we chose to go with the breakaway walls and flood vents for our elevators instead of having hardened structures. Reinforced concrete masonry walls are the exact, the reason you have to have them is because if you don't build a structure that's hydrodynamic and hydrostatically capable of handling the loads, then you have to build a hardened structure. Breakaway walls meet both hydrostatic and hydrodynamic loads if you put flood vents in them. And they also meet the other section of our code where we require A and B zones to meet the same standards.
I have a question, if I may. In regards to those flood vents for the elevator shaft? Was there any discussion about the impact of salt air blowing in on that shaft with all electronics in the elevator?
Well, the elevator shafts, you have two different types. You have both, you have a hydraulic and you have mechanical ones that have some air holes with them, but basically they're two separated features. In a coastal high hazard area, that stuff is supposed to be in its own enclosure and it's supposed to be above the shaft. So if you've got anything other than a cable or anything else like that down there, and if it is down there, it's got to be serviceable, maintainable. If you've got anything else that shouldn't be able to handle the heat, it shouldn't be down.
In the cart, there are controls.
The mechanical basically hoists, it hoists, and the pneumatic basically pushes.
I got all that, but I'm talking about the controls that's in the car.
You're talking about like a cart?
He talking about the button getting them.
One, two, three, all that.
Well, it's not, it's really no different than, well, to start off with, if you've got the enclosure and you've got the flood vents, the enclosure is not one hundred percent airproof anyway. I mean, there's still, the same air is still passing back and forth through there because there is no sealed door on the thing. When you open the door, it's, the shaft's available in there. It's not sealed, never sealed. And it's not sealed from the top either, really, I mean, unless you've built it.
I understand what you're saying, but I've got, I've got some homeowners right now that are replacing twenty-plus thousand dollar elevators because they can't get the electronic components for their car. And just interested in hearing what you had to say about that.
Well, I don't know if there's any way to protect that, though, that's what I'm trying to say. You would think that if they're going to put it in a environment, in a salt air environment like that, you know what I mean, that they would be, because cargo lifts seem to do real well. You know what I mean, they got the same.
Yeah, well, they're made for the outside.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
Did they leave the elevator down at the bottom of watergate?
No, just in time, they have some, two of the houses are vintage, two thousand six and seven.
Yeah, they're out of business.
Yeah, well, Packers.
That's what the problem is, they're dinosaurs anyway.
But, I mean, it's on the, it's about fourteen.
Anyway, you move along, I'll have my say.
Well, I'm not going to defend it, if you want hardened structures, we'll go, we'll start.
No, I'm not going to get into that either.
Yeah.
Oh, wash away, yeah.
All right. Bullkids, we moved, we got rid of the, you can't have a pile in the pushroom with seven people, bullkid. I don't even know what, I don't know, you can't say anything to that other than, glad it's gone.
Hey, Tim, I think, because you had asked that, but I think that was a Doug Gillette thing from years ago. And his reason for that was to dead men. You know, today, we put one all the way across there, you know.
Yeah, I require, I require a dead man for forty-five degree deflection because one post don't give you enough deflection over the wall back.
That's right. See, old Doug, he just would use that, you know, little six by six, you know what I'm saying? And that's where that seven foot deal came from, he wanted that seven foot clear so that it wouldn't bother the, you know, he had room.
Well, the, the, well, the dead man for the breakaway wall, the deflection's up there.
That's right.
The foundation for a pile, the deflection's up there. So I don't know how they would correspond. If the, if the deflection on a house is at a forty-five degree angle perpendicular to the pile, you're in trouble. Somebody's got a rug tied around your house and pulling on it. So, anyway, that's, there's a difference there. And let's see, we took out the language that talked about on-site placement order, we don't allow second tanks. So it's been removed. And I think, I think that's it. We did add the two hundred fifty dollars if you want to amend the section, or go ahead and have a petition to have amended, because that's reasonable for plan review for us to go. So I think that that's, this is probably one of the better text amendments that we brought to y'all in a whole. It'll do a lot more good out there and make usable some properties. That's it.
I move that we adopt ordinance twenty dash eleven and ordinance amending the Holden Beach Code of Ordinances Title fifteen land usage as presented.
Second.
We can't.
Oh, that's twenty-four hours, sorry, because of the public, yes, we'll do that at the special meeting.
Would you make a motion that documents be prepared for that public hearing?
Yes, but it's not a public, it's, okay. I propose this document be prepared for presentation at a, an upcoming special meeting where we can adopt the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Is that motion in order, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimously passed.
On another note, I was asked not to speak for a long time tonight, so I hope I kept it short. Because Christie pretty much implied that I do a lot of talking around up here.
She's right.
Thank you, Tim, but.
Mr. Hewitt, number eleven.
Yes, sir, we'd advertised in the paper and solicited proposals from firms to update the water and sewer system development fee analysis. We received two responses to that, the Wooton Company, an engineering firm, and Rafftelis Financial Professionals. And we seek staff guidance on who you would like us to pursue developing a relationship with in order to have the study updated.
For the benefit of everybody else, would you mind discussing what the process is and why there's the cost in these proposals?
It's, it's, one's an engineering firm and the other's a financial firm. So all we did was request qualifications because there are rules for obtaining engineering services. So we thought it prudent to just stick with that so that the playing field was left. Should you like one or the other, that would be subject to an approval of a contract that we would bring back to the board.
Any questions, comments? I would just make a comment. I thought it was interesting to look at the list of former clients or current clients and those that they have worked for that have common grounds with us.
I like the Rafftelis, or how you pronounce it, primarily because they are, they're mostly experiences in rate setting for utilities. So they have a lot of experience across the country, it's not just in North Carolina. And to me, this is more of a financial decision than it is a engineering decision.
Anybody want to put a motion on the table? I guess, Mr. Hewitt, you're looking for an answer, hopefully tonight.
This is one of the, one of the goals that the board had set forth for itself to move forward with update of the study.
Since I tend to agree with Woody, I think they're both excellent. But I tend to agree with Woody in terms of Rafftelis. And again, I also, you know, looked at different cities that they work with, that I would move we direct the town manager to request, or to proceed with Rafftelis as the vendor or the firm of interest for our water sewer system development fee analysis, which I assume means requesting a proposed contract from them.
Second.
Motion second, more discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk? Okay, hundredth anniversary, Mr. Hewitt?
Today, exactly one hundred years ago, the Nineteenth Amendment was passed that provided the women with the right to vote. And this resolution is in support of that. I'd like to read it if I may.
Sure.
Resolution regarding the G F W C of Holden Beach's recognition of the one hundredth anniversary of the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment providing women the right to vote. Let it be known that whereas the Nineteenth Amendment recognized significance of women's suffrage, which then ratified in nineteen twenty, affirmed the citizenship of more than twenty-six million women and granted them a mechanism to empower themselves, their families, and their community. And whereas the Nineteenth Amendment was ratified on August eighteenth nineteen twenty, and whereas the year twenty twenty marks the one hundredth anniversary of the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment and offers an unparalleled opportunity to commemorate a milestone of democracy. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Holden Beach is proud to recognize the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment marked the end of a three-generation struggle to win the right to vote for women. And be it also resolved that the town of Holden Beach supports G F W C, also known as the General Federation of Women's Clubs of Holden Beach's celebration of the one hundredth anniversary of women winning the right to vote.
Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution twenty dash oh six, and I thank the town for providing us with this proposed resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, unanimously. Mr. Hewitt, number thirteen?
Yes, sir, we need to update the B B N T banking signatories with our local branch here. Traditionally, it's been two elected officials and two staff members. Now that we have Mr. McRaney on board as the second staff member, and traditionally, it's been the mayor and the mayor pro tem. And that's what this resolution proposes.
Is there a motion? All right, second, anybody?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk? Ms. Bat, number fourteen?
Yes, at the last meeting, there was discussion about restrictions for picking up debris in gated communities. And I appreciate the fact that the Board of Commissioners did make the determination that debris would be picked up in gated communities. But I would appreciate if there could be a brief discussion of where these restrictions come from so that the people in gated communities do understand debris pickup rules under FEMA, which is where this has come from. Probably, yeah, probably. I think that we have a lot of confusion, people who don't understand why this happens. And I think that they just, it would benefit if they just had a little bit of education of why the gated communities are treated differently.
The only thing you can add to that, Pat, is it's actually a federal requirement, you know, it's not something going on there where it's actually putting public safety at risk or something like that. You can't go in a gated community and pick up debris and get FEMA funded, reimbursed and funded for it. We can go in there like we did now, you know, with the town funding up the money and pay it, that's all the way to do it. You know, if we had a situation where something happened and you had houses and stuff got torn down and there were walking roadways and stuff, and we couldn't get to our sewer pump stations or borderline repairs or something, that'd be a totally different ballgame and you could probably do it under those circumstances. But it'd have to be something like that in order to make that happen. It's not my rules, it's FEMA's rules, and I just kind of wanted to make sure we laid that out before we started it because I sure won't have been down on Chris Clemmons to say stuff and somebody start wondering how come we couldn't get reimbursed.
And I think that what Chris said, he qualified it with "and", you can't get reimbursement because that's federal reimbursement. Not that you can't provide the service.
Yes, yes, no.
Not that you can't provide the service.
I absolutely understand that, and that's important. I just want people to understand that it's not the same in the gated communities in terms of a FEMA debris collection reimbursement practice.
If you were to research that out online, you could have a bunch of cases where there's places where they had millions of dollars invested and something like that couldn't give you funds after the fact.
Yeah. Now, I did read this a couple of years ago, I think after Florence or before Florence. Is there a, and there's a provision that it would be different if... Florence. Is there a, and there's a provision that it would be different if people in the gated communities moved their debris outside of the gated community? Is that?
That's correct.
That's correct.
If you get it, it doesn't drive away outside that community, they'll pick it up.
Yeah. And, and all I'm going to say is, again, that's, that's an issue I hope we never have to deal with because there is not really a simple place for debris to come outside of the gated community and not impede other people's entrance to their houses. We just don't have that much room. But I just, I just want our owners to understand the system and to understand that this is not a town decision, that this is directed by FEMA.
That's great.
Okay.
You still have the floor, Ms. Pat, number fourteen, aye?
Okay. Um, yes. We're gonna, amazingly, there were more than, there was more than one of us who came to the meeting and suddenly were discussing that during this strange period when we can't have the public attend our meetings, would it be worthwhile to start the BOCM earlier in the evening for staff's convenience and maybe some of our convenience who, you know, like to go to bed a little bit earlier, understanding that we do have some people on the board who run businesses, so, you know, it's really part of, of their decision too. But would it be possible for us to start these meetings at five o'clock during this time period when we can't have our public come anyway? So I just leave that to the commissioners for discussion, whether or not we might pull our meeting forward a couple hours for the next few months until we get back to normal.
Is that a problem for staff?
I, I haven't solicited anything from the staff. I, I don't know. That was, it's the first I'd heard of it, as far as moving it, moving it up.
Me too.
I, I would, I would assume that it's not a problem, but just as soon as I say that, somebody is have, is going to have set up babysitters and that kind of thing, so I don't know.
Okay. Then, then I would suggest that contingent upon it being acceptable by staff, that I would make a motion that we move future meetings till five o'clock.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. We'll be meeting at five o'clock. In accordance to the most.
Contingent on staff.
But now, contingent on staff.
Contingent on staff. So, Town Clerk, will we need to discuss this and approve it next month to give the public time to comment or not?
It, it's your agenda. You could add it to the agenda if you choose to do so. All I would need to do, you did a contingent upon staff, so I would just ask the ones that are sitting in front of us that typically come, and then I would just have to put an amended meeting schedule out. So that, I mean, it's not a problem to do it on my end if you guys want to do it on, in September.
That would be fine.
All right, we'll turn the page. Town Manager's report, number fifteen.
Yes, sir. The first item that I'd like to address, and it's not on the cheat sheet, cheat sheet that I provided to you, is that we are spraying for mosquitoes. We're getting a lot of feedback on them as we have requested, and it's part of the protocol that we need that feedback so that Chris can specifically target them, but I have heard more input about mosquitoes this year than, than I think any other time. And I know that we've had a lot of rain, but it just seems like they are particularly numerous and vigorous this year.
It's doing a lot of help, the, the spraying.
Okay.
Down in my area anyhow.
Just to give you an update on the hurricane's initial analysis on what type of damages that we had from it, the initial look see, Franway reports to us that the Central Reach area lost approximately fifty thousand yards, with the entire Upper Beach losing about a hundred thousand yards. What we're seeing is a nearshore spread of the sand from off the dry sand beach down into the swash zone, and it's spreading westward too. So we'll have a, a more final calculation on what that is, but the losses are not what we had feared in terms of hits to the beach strand. Hurricane debris, I think we touched on that briefly. Looks like we've had about sixteen hundred cubic yards removed with about four hundred left. We've, we're looking at the cutoff being next Tuesday, August the twenty-fifth. Every day, Chris gets a report. I've included a, an example of that, and it's exactly how many loads were hauled. It's in your, in your package, and we haven't had a reestimation of, of the total debris out there. So what I'd like to stress for the public that, that's listening in, is that that debris contractor will be final in about a week. So if you got stuff, go ahead and get it out to the road because if you put it out there, after that, you're going to be taking it to the dump or making arrangements on your own to have that taken care of. Our beach strand contractor, the loose debris on the strand is gone, except I believe that the, the scrap dock from Inlet View might have got picked up today. So we're totally clear on the beach, other than stuff that may wash back in. He'll be starting with removal of damaged sand fence and post, posting rope that has begun, and he'll be working from east to west. So that will take an indeterminate amount of time because many of those, of those stakes that are broken off, they've got to be hand dug, and we want to make sure that we don't damage the vegetation any more than we have to. So we're going to take, he, he's got to, he's got to produce in order to make money, but still, we want to make sure that we, we take some care with how that, that dune system is treated as we clear those hazards. Occupancy tax receipts, the board had asked to give a look see as to what August receipts looked like compared to last year. I've included that at, at attachment two, and it looks like that, we haven't, we hadn't missed a lick, to tell you the truth, even with, with everything. That attachment two is this big sheet here, so that's, that's playing out as is. We don't know what tomorrow's going to bring, but we're in, we're in pretty good shape. And as far as to how that holds up against our budget to actual, at, at handout three, we, we've already plus eleven percent over what we'd budgeted for the year. Of course, that budget was half of what we'd budgeted for in the past, so revenues were still good with revenues, and that's always good to have exceeded your revenues on, over what you budgeted. Is there any questions you had about that?
No, I, I think that there were some people who contacted me after I had asked those questions at, at the last meeting. So just to put it in a nutshell, we're ahead of the projections that we put into the budget, and our August this year won't be much different than our August, our historical August numbers.
That's what it appears to be.
Right. Okay, fine, thank you.
We wrapped up the fieldwork with the audit. The day that the hurricane, on Friday, the twenty-ninth of July, as I've reported to the board previously, it appears initial, initially from the project manager, there are no findings. That's subject to review by their quality control. We remain on schedule for that. The Central Reach project, our sand search is complete, looks like that data is good, and probably just importantly, along the, the archaeological survey line, there are no wrecks. We haven't found any wrecks in, in the middle of a, of a sand honey hole out there. That'd be, wouldn't be good for the sand, you know? And that's what, that's what actually, you know, in Lockwood Folly Inlet is impeding the use of that area as a sand source because that's a Civil War historical district out there. It's got two wrecks in it.
About, without, without letting people know where it is exactly, about how far from Holden Beach is the sand source?
Right out there.
So closer than the last, than the Central Reach project?
It's more centrally located, yeah. We anticipate that that permit will be submitted by the end of this month. Speaking to the federal project, after consulting with Porter Spruill or being assisted by Porter Spruill and talking with the Wilmington District, and their conversations with Wilmington District, I've submitted the study's letter of intent using the existing authorization, and we have found out that using that existing authorization and at the Corps urging that we could be eligible to be included in the work plan as early as next, next spring. So depending on how that plays out, we're going to wait until that process works through before we submit the seven thousand and one application. So we should know something in a January, February timeframe if we made it into the Corps' work plan for fiscal year twenty-one. Speaking of federal interests, Congressman Rousher visited us last week to tour the storm damage. Mayor Holden and I accompanied him down to, on several spots on the beach, took him out on the strand, showed him some of the flooding, flooded areas, houses that had been hit, and what we were not able, or I was not able to gain any insight as to when and if a federal declaration would be made for North Carolina and Brunson County, subs, other than the fact that the state is working real hard to get the quantification made for it. Subsequent to Congressman Rousher's visit, we were visited by Mike Sprayberry's special project manager from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, who shared with us that unofficially FEMA is not, FEMA's unofficial interpretation of making storm, a federal declaration recommendation, they are not going to recognize strand damages and determining the amount for federal disaster declarations. So we are not going to be, that fifty thousand cubic yards, half a million dollars, if you want to say that, that will not go into the calculation for making a federal disaster declaration. So that is a very different ballgame than one we've been playing in, in the past because one time, one of our storms, the, the sand losses at Holden Beach alone qualified North Carolina for a federal declaration. So the ballgame is changing on how the FEMA program works, and it remains to be seen how that's going to impact us here at Holden Beach with our strand management efforts.
David, just to follow. That's to trigger a declaration, but once the declaration is triggered, if we do the work, we'll be entitled to reimbursement.
That, after the declaration happens, then we have to get a, a project worksheet approved, a project approved.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of our coastal consulting engineer, we actually had solicited inputs from a, a number of firms that are qualified, and we've only got one response so far. So we'll review our contracting rules to make sure that that's okay before we bring something back for the board. And lastly, goes without saying, our concerts have been canceled for the season. That's all I got.
Any questions? Okay, Mayor's report, Mr. Hewitt just mentioned concerts, Festival by the Sea, I'm getting more and more calls. Christie, where are we with that?
The Merchants Association makes that decision independently and lets us know, and they haven't communicated anything differently to me at this time.
Okay, and the town hasn't taken the position of allowing it or not allowing it?
No, sir.
Okay. Hoping everybody understands, that's still up in the air. Mayor's comments otherwise, again, thanks to all the property owners and citizens and visitors who are working together to get through this emergency time that we've dealt with this hurricane, and especially the police department and the town employees putting in all the extra hours. Hope we don't have to deal with that anymore this year. And the state of the island, I think, is in pretty good shape considering when we look at our neighbors. I have not been on the oceanfront of Oak Island. I understand there's still multiple properties down there that don't have water, sewer, and electricity, and their oceanfront is, especially the west end is in severe damage condition, and Ocean Isle Beach, our neighbor to the west of us, their east end is, is devastated. So we're fortunate and thanks to all of our property owners for supporting our sand projects. That fifteen million dollar investment continues to show us that beach sand and renourishment programs are the right direction to go in, and so let's just thank the good Lord above for letting us be here in this good a condition. And at that point, I'm going to ask our illustrious, Mr. Gerald Brown, our mayor pro tem, did you have a report, sir?
Just, I wanted to say that I just thank the staff, everybody here, okay, for a really good job getting us up and running as quick as you did, and, and we, we appreciate that. Doesn't go, doesn't not go unseen, and thank you for that. I'd also like to thank Mr. Allen, our mayor. He takes, he's almost like a lot of abuse during these things because everybody's hollering at him, you know? And, and, you know, he doesn't, the last thing that a man with a rental company wants to do is tell the people they can't come down here, okay? But now, he ta, he's taken a lot of, a lot of criticism on that. But just thank you for holding up, thank you for the job you do for us, because there's a lot there that you do that most people don't see. So I just want you to know that we appreciate you.
Thanks, sir.
All right. And let's continue. Everybody stay safe, keep up the social distancing, wear your mask, okay? And so far, we haven't had any real bad things here, so let's just hope we, that good luck stays with us, and, and everybody stay safe.
Mr. Woody?
I also, too, want to thank the staff. Like I said, it doesn't go unrecognized, all the hard work y'all've put in. I've seen Jeremy out there in traffic a couple of times. I was worried about him because he was, the sun was hot, his head was blistered, but the staff has put in a lot of time, and, and I want you to know, we do appreciate it, but I also want you to go home and tell your families how much we appreciate it, and we appreciate them because your families have probably suffered a little bit the last week or two because you've been putting in a lot of hours, which means things at home haven't been able to get done. So please tell your families, we do appreciate the suffering that they've had because of what you've had to do to, to support the property owners and, and let them know we appreciate their contributions too.
Mr. Brown?
I'd also like to staff, thank the staff and all the town employees for their hard work getting us back online, as well as the residents and homeowners. They, they certainly did their part as well. The island is in pretty good shape and is back in business, and I'd love to see all the people coming, and I appreciate every bit of it. The second and the only other thing I would like to add is, just as we had to deal with COVID and still dealing with COVID, there is no roadmap to the right thing to do in a storm situation. So I would ask, I got a lot of criticism and pats on the back both ways during this storm, but this storm was supposed to be just a little old tropical nothing, and it ended up- nothing and it ended up a whole lot worse than we predicted and we ended up, I think Allen made the, the perfect call, but it, it could have gone the other way and, and not rained a drop or, or missed us, you know, the whole time, but I mean, I want everybody to realize that it, it is a hard decision and it's just pretty much unpredictable until it gets here, so bear with us on these tough decisions that, that we have to make.
Mr. Mike?
I, I'll echo all, all the members, the, I'm proud of, of the work that the town did and the, and the response that they, the town had to, to this storm. We were very fortunate, but, you know, sometimes fortune is the result of hard work and the, the town has put in the hard work preparing the beach, but also the cleanup that was done afterwards, it, it was really terrific. And I'd like to just like point out one, one specific, if you look at the daily message from Brunswick County about COVID, buried, buried in there last week along with that message was their response to the hurricane and it asked that individuals within Brunswick County submit their estimated losses to the county so that the county could apply for FEMA benefits. So of course I sent a note to the town saying, hey, why don't you, why don't you send this out, why don't you let everybody know about this? I bet you there's not a lot of people who know about that and the, the wiser people who have more experience said, oh, hold on a second there buddy, we, we've already figured this out and it takes people with a, a lot of experience to give a legitimate estimate at the cost of the damage and just compare the damage that we can justify here with the, with a cost analysis compared to the damage that Oak Island is submitting even though on the surface it looks like they had a lot more damage. So what, what I'm trying to say is that the people who work for the town know what they're doing, we're fortunate to have people who know what they're doing and this is very similar, this particular aspect to the inlet hazard area where we have people who looked at that, understood it from the very bottom to the very top, the most complex to the simplest aspect, analyzed it and critiqued it point by point by point and they're doing the same thing for us as a result of this storm and because of that, we'll be much better off at the end of the day, so I appreciate everything they do.
Ms. Pat?
Yeah, I can't say enough about the staff effort and I think in addition, the fact that we've had such a productive meeting today with so many of the things that were tasked in the last couple of months coming to completion here just shows that despite everything you get, that gets thrown at you guys, you still somehow managed to stay to business, so thank you. I am also going to make what Mike usually does is a call out to the citizens to please make sure they fill out their census forms, either paper or online. We got something from the North Carolina League of Municipalities today that was pointing out that North Carolina is at the moment severely undercounted and stands to lose, was it seventy-five million dollars beca, if, if people don't start to respond and if I calculated right, if you just extrapolated to our town, if people don't do this, we're talking about getting about a million dollars a year if we're counted correctly. So really, it's extremely important for our residents to get that census information in and to encourage everybody in the county to do it as well. We just need North Carolina to be responding.
Very good. Okay, number eighteen, consideration of an executive session.
Executive session pursuant to North Carolina general statute one four three three one eight eleven A six to discuss qualifications, competence, performance of a public officer or employee.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the commissioners have voted to go into executive session.